To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, may I have the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen, compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, in accord with the operation of public meetings pursuant to DCA guidelines in light of the COVID pandemic, notice of this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell is absent this evening. Mr. Riker? Mr. Jess Wiki is absent this evening. Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here. Thank you. Okay, payment of voucher recording secretary for this evening, November 16, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
Back and forth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes from our November 2 meeting. Anyone have any changes, comments, questions? Everything good with that? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Engineering and planning matters, gentlemen. Do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Legal matters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one mat, one mat. Is there an issue?
Okay, thank you. Hello, Michelle.
All right, so I'll make that announcement, Mr. Chairman, for the record. I'll make that the second legal matter. Michelle Campbell, who is a member of the planning board, is participating as a panelist over the Zoom for the record, though she may ultimately require to review the transcript. Mr. Chairman, with regard to legal matters, I'd just like to make a brief announcement regarding the operation of this meeting this evening. As the public is aware and as has been posted pursuant to order dated and filed November 4, 2020, this meeting is pursuant for the Jackson Park South application is operating. It is operating in the manner in which we prescribe, which is that the board is here live, the applicant and their witnesses are available over Zoom technology of most import, however, for the public to understand. And again, this is pursuant to the court order, not necessarily at the direction of the planning board or the applicant. The applicant will have the opportunity to place their entire case in chief, their entire case into the record. They will be subject to questions and any cross-examination from the board and from board professionals. However, at the end of their placing their case in chief in the record, at that point in time, we will report back to the court, evaluate where the COVID-19 restrictions are. For instance, we're aware that the governor just put additional restrictions on indoor gatherings effective tomorrow. And we, the applicant in the court, along with a special master, will evaluate how best to facilitate public participation. Along those lines, I had a discussion with the applicant's attorney today. There is a court reporter available who's taking minutes, and the applicant will be providing transcripts to the municipality that the municipality can either post or at least have available for people as well, so that the record remains as fresh as possible pending the outcome of the matter.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few resolutions. The first being, believe it or not, we're coming up to the end of the year, and we have to look forward to 2021. So we have our first resolution are our meeting dates for 2021, and I'll read them into the record. They are January 11 will be our reorganization meeting, January 25, February 1, March 1, March 15, April 5, April 19, May 3, May 17, June 7, June 21, July 19, August 2, and August 16, September 20, October 4, and October 18, and November 1 and 15, and December 6 and 20. All meetings will begin at 7:30 PM as they do now. And with that stated, can I get a motion, please? You got a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Next resolution would be Block 9001, Lot 13, JLK Home Search LLC. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that resolution approves a minor subdivision with variance relief for that Block 9001, Lot 13, to create two 1-acre lots, proposed lots 13.01 and 13.02. Each lot would be 1 acre.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for that, please? End roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Next up, we have Block 13301, Lots 7 through 9, 21 and 23, and that is 300 Clear Stream LLC. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the board at its last meeting of October granted a time, two one-year time extensions for 300 Clear Stream LLC. Lots and blocks, as you indicated, they are up and through May 7, 2021. The primary reason articulated for the request for the time extension was requiring additional updates through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. There was no objection from our professionals as to that request.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? End roll call.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Changes to the agenda? Do we have anything, Denise? Yes, thank you. In that application, I guess, do you have any legal matters?
No, Mr. Chairman, just if you have any questions about Macedonia.
Okay, thank you. So we have Block 3601, Lots 2, 3, 5 and 6, Macedonia Baptist Church. Apparently, they're still in need of some approvals, and they have some changes to their application. So we're going to carry that application to January 25 of 2021. So can I get a motion for that, please? End roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, and our only application on this evening's agenda is Block 10401, 17, I'm sorry, 17802, Lots 5.04, 57.01, Jackson Park, and this is the south section. And I ask that Mr. Clea as usual if you could lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant seeking preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan so as to establish 549 dwelling units on the subject property, 61 single-family homes, 144 apartments, 100 of which will be COA compliant, I'm sorry, COA compliant, and 340, 344 townhouse units. Development will also include a 600 square foot recreational clubhouse area, and active recreation and passive recreational amenities. Just to refresh the board's memory, this was the subject of a GDP application and approval for the Jackson Park North and South developments. This is the south portion of the project, and it's basically consistent with the representations and the plans that the applicant has previously provided and upon which the board granted the approval. The GDP, the previous GDP approval was basically conceptual in nature, and tonight we have the hard engineering details for the development that's proposed. The application is compliant with the development standards in the MF-AH-8 zoning district. It is subject to some conditional use standards, so pretty much right from the get-go, we should have some testimony from the applicant regarding compliance with those conditional use standards, just to assure compliance as far as jurisdiction goes. This project is subject to the residential site improvement standards and some testimony from the applicant as far as compliance with those standards. The new roadways will be 50-foot right-of-way, 30-foot wide pavement area with curbs and sidewalks provided on both sides. The applicant should provide some testimony and confirm that all right-of-way improvements within West Veterans Highway are going to be provided. The site is impacted by a variety of environmental constraints and also the conservation overlay zone. The applicant's provided a letter of interpretation verifying the location of the existing on-site freshwater wetlands and buffer areas. The applicant submitted an environmental impact statement, the conclusions of which should be provided or discussed with the board, and the applicant should also indicate any comments which have been received from the local environmental commission. The project is going to be serviced by public water and sewer, so some brief testimony from the applicant is regarding the overall design of that system, although any approval that may be granted will be subject to review and approval by the Jackson Township MUA. We do note that there is a variety of off-site easement areas that will be required to facilitate the sewer and water lines, so some testimony from the applicant as far as the status of those off-site areas that need to be acquired or easement secured. Grading and drainage, we have no issues with the overall site grading design. The applicant should provide some testimony regarding stormwater management facilities. The DEP has reviewed and approved the system, although it's not really in strict compliance with the local ordinances, but it's my understanding that the DEP permits may supersede the specific requirements of the local ordinance. So some testimony from the applicant regarding ownership and maintenance of not only the drainage system, but the internal roadways, rec area, and the extent of municipal services that will be required to service the site. Lighting throughout the site has been provided. We'll take no exception to the design that's proposed. Landscaping plans have also been provided, but some testimony from the applicant regarding buffering to adjacent properties should be provided. The applicant is compliant as far as the project signs, no variance relievers required. Some testimony from the applicant regarding the architectural features of the buildings, as well as the clubhouse and townhouse and multifamily buildings. Lastly, I'll close with the, the site is also crossed by Prosper Town Road. It's a public right-of-way, which will be impacted for the development, which is proposed, so some testimony from the applicant regarding how that's going to fit into the overall development project. And I'll say that's pretty much it for now.
Thank you. Mr. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try not to repeat too many of Doug's comments. Does anyone have any problems hearing me? Thank you. We have two reports and evidence dated July 31 of 2019 and August 10 of 2020. As Mr. Clea indicated, the site is in the MF-AH-8 zone, and the uses that are proposed this evening are permitted in that zone. We would ask that the applicant discuss any waivers or variances that are listed in any of the reports. There had initially been waiver or variance listed regarding parking setback. I believe the applicant's going to provide some testimony regarding that. As it relates to technical comments in our report, we'd like some discussion regarding the site amenities for the site. We know how many units, what type, we're going to hear description of where they're going to be. What are the amenities for the site? We'd ask for some comments regarding handicap accessibility throughout the site. As Mr. Clea indicated, there are some easements. There's one easement in particular for the sanitary sewer force main that goes off-site, which I'm not sure is that, since it's an off-site easement, I think there should be some discussion about how, what, where, and why with regards to that off-site pump station force main. The site has a COA component, and there should be some discussion regarding the construction and phasing schedule of the COA units. The initial submission just had them in one of the phases of the site. There's a requirement for providing COA units in accordance with certain standards. We'd like to hear some detailed discussion about active and passive recreation facilities on the site as part of the site amenity discussion. We have a section of our report dealing with traffic, site fronts on the county road, which is county jurisdiction. Internally, we'd like to hear about any traffic impacts from the design that's being proposed. Mr. Clea, discuss Prosper Town Road. For the record, I think the applicant should be specific as to what's necessary to effectuate the approval that they're seeking tonight with regards to Prosper Town Road's right-of-way. We have comments regarding buffering and landscaping and lighting as well. We also have comments regarding solid waste and recycling throughout the site, given the types of uses that are, the types of housing stock that are being proposed. And lastly, we'd ask for a detailed description of the outside agencies that are required for the project, as well as the status. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicant. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see everybody. Hope everybody's staying well and healthy during this time. I'll try not to repeat all that Mr. Peters and Mr. Clea mentioned, but I'll just do a very brief summary of the application. So first and foremost, as everybody knows, the project's located in the MF-AH-8 zone, which was the Affordable Housing District, the residential affordable housing district created as a part of the municipality's Affordable Housing Plan. The property consists of two block and lots, Block 10401, Lot 5.01, and Block 17802, Lot 57.01. And this aspect of the Affordable Housing Plan is known as the south parcel. The GDP approval, which was given by this board back in, I believe, by resolution of May of 2019, included this aspect of the property. The south parcel, which everybody will refer to here, is approximately 129.22 acres, and as part of that, we're seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval, preliminary and final major site plan approval, and conditional use approval as well. There are 549 units proposed, as indicated, 100 of which will be affordable units. The single families will be 61 out of the total. Townhomes will be 168, which will include four, five, or six-unit buildings. Stacked townhomes equate for 176 of the homes being proposed. Those will be in eight or 12-unit buildings, and the multifamily component will be 144 units in six buildings. The application, in our opinion, is variance-free, but as Mr. Peters indicated, there is one issue that we will address regarding a potential variance, but at a minimum, we believe that it may be a de minimis exception from the residential site improvement standards. We believe that we don't need any design waivers associated with this application, and to the extent that there any are noted in any of the letters that we can comply. The property fronts on West Veterans Highway, which is in Ocean County Road. The application has been filed with the county and is under review. Several DEP permits have been issued associated with this application and took some, almost 18 months to achieve. There's a flood hazard verification, wetlands, letter of interpretation, and I'll let Ms. Galvin go into the remainder of them, if she can explain them better than I can. I have four witnesses that I plan on calling as part of the application. They're the same four witnesses that testified in regards to the north parcel. They are Daphne Galvin, who's our civil engineer, Nicholas Verteresi, who's our traffic engineer, Mitch Newman, who is a representative of the applicant, and Craig Rainkamp, who's our professional planner. As counsel for the board indicated, Mr. Gertner, per court order, we are going to put on our case in chief first, and then when that's concluded, we will open it up to the public, and I will have all my witnesses available for cross-examination at that time. And we'll have all of our witnesses always available in the event that we don't conclude at a meeting. I have a court reporter who's listening and is taking down the case. She indicated to me that if, just based on the format of the way that this meeting's being conducted, when someone speaks, they could just indicate who they are. That way she could properly take down who's speaking, and the record can reflect that. I will provide my transcript to the board and Mr. Gertner, so that it's available to any board members, as well as to the public for review. I just want to say, we served our notice and provided our affidavit of service and publication that was sent to the board, and all of our application materials, exhibits were also on file as well. So, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any other questions for me, I'm happy to call my first witness, although I do see that, I believe, counsel for a party is raising their hand in the participant room. So I don't know if you want to recognize that person before I start my testimony.
Okay, before you do, I think we have an objector that is on this Zoom call. I'd like to give him just the opportunity to introduce himself.
Mr. Gazarovski, are you, the chair has recognized you just for the purposes of placing your notice on the record. Are you there?
I am, thank you. I wasn't following the screens. Alexis Gazarovski, appearing on behalf of our firm.
Okay, and you understand that that recognition is all that you have this evening?
Yes, and then we'll have our opportunity for cross-examination and everything else the next session.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Tuvall?
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first witness I'd like to call, Daphne Galvin from Partner Engineering, who's our civil engineer. She was qualified and as an expert at the last, on the north parcel, but I think for purposes of the record, I should go through her qualifications again, if that's okay. We can do it very briefly.
So, Ms. Galvin, if you kindly raise your right hand, and just for the records that the board understands as well, this application in and of itself stands on itself. So all the, all, despite Mr. Tuvall's comments respectfully, each and every expert witness he provides will be sworn again, and it's up to the chairman to the level at which you want to more dear them with regard to their qualifications. But, Ms. Galvin, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear a firm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Will you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, even though it's on the screen here, and your affiliation?
Sure. Daphne Galvin, G-A-L-V-I-N. I'm employed by Partner Engineering and Science in Eaton Town, New Jersey.
So, Ms. Galvin, for the record and for the board, can you just go through your qualifications as civil engineer, educational background, licenses held, and experience testifying before similar planning boards and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Sure. I have a bachelor of science in civil engineering from Lafayette College. I also have a graduate certificate in project management from NJIT. I obtained my professional engineering license in New Jersey in 1989. I also obtained my LEED accreditation in 2009. I have over 35 years of experience in all aspects of land development, from feasibility and due diligence, through design, approvals, and construction on residential, commercial, and industrial projects for private and public clients. I've been accepted as an expert witness and provided testimony in dozens of municipalities throughout New Jersey, including Jackson Township.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. We accept your credentials. You testified before us. Thank you.
I can't.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean, is my, do I sound better now? A little clearer?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Sorry, my speaker must have been too far away. So, Ms. Galvin, let's get the board started by getting the board oriented to the site and some of the existing conditions. So why don't we go to our first exhibit? Share your screen and put that up. All right, and why don't you identify for the record what A1 is?
Sure. A1 is entitled "The Expanded Aerial Exhibit, Jackson Park." It was prepared by Partner dated March 18, 2019. It has a date stamp of today, November 16, 2020. This was an exhibit that was used in the GDP and the north section applications. Just to get orientated, there's a north arrow in the upper right-hand corner, so north is generally up and to the right. The north parcel is generally in the center of the exhibit, and the south section parcel is down in the lower left corner. I'm making reference to the north section only for orientation purposes. It's not part of the subject application.
And Daphne, Mr. Gertner raised a good point, is these applications do stand on their own, the north and the south. Just some foundational questions. You visited the south parcel and the surrounding area?
Yes.
All right, and all the plans prepared by Partner Engineering will be prepared by you or under your supervision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, please continue.
Sure. Again, just for orientation purposes, in the lower left-hand corner, West Veterans Highway, which is County Route 528, Prosper Town Road, which runs in a generally east-west direction, labeled here as a dirt road with a 33-foot right-of-way. Over just off to the left of the south section is Harvard West Drive, and then over, going at a diagonal across the exhibit is Cassville Road, which is known as County Route 571. Running along the northerly boundary of the site is the cedar branch of the Toms River. That intersects with the Pole Brook and eventually runs in a, in an easterly direction under Cassville Road. The surrounding uses for the south section, it's undeveloped to the north and across West Veterans Highway to the south, and then there's residential uses over to the west at Harvard West Drive, and also to the east. Regarding Prosper Town Road, it's a 33-foot-wide, unimproved public right-of-way that separates the south into two parcels. Unimproved means that there's no pavement, no curb, no sidewalk, et cetera. It's a dirt path that's approximately eight feet wide, and there's in and out of the existing right-of-way, and based on its condition, it appears to be used by pedestrians and ATVs. Okay, I'm going to zoom in a little bit.
So you're zooming in on Exhibit A1, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just keep referring to the exhibit so that the court reporter knows which exhibit we're referring to.
Sure. So again, still Exhibit A1, just zoomed in a little bit. I mentioned that there were two parcels here that are separated by the Prosper Town right-of-way. The smaller parcel to the north of the right-of-way is Block 10401, Lot 5.04. The larger parcel to the left of the right-of-way is Block 17802, Lot 57.01. The total acreage for both parcels is approximately 129.2 acres. The south section is undeveloped and consists primarily of mixed forest uplands and wetlands. Man-made structures and features are limited to those that are created by hunters and others traversing the site. The cedar branch of the Toms River runs generally along the northern portion or the northern property line of the south section, flows easterly, again, connecting to the Pole Brook and going under Cassville Road. There is a flood hazard area associated with the cedar branch. We have obtained already from NJDEP a flood hazard area verification, which was issued in September 25, 2007. It identifies a 300-foot riparian zone due to the category-one water classification of the cedar branch. There are no on-site disturbances proposed within that regulated area. In addition to a flood hazard area, there are also wetlands associated with the cedar branch along the northern portion and northeasterly portions of the site. We've obtained from NJDEP a wetlands letter of interpretation that was issued on January 25, 2018. That letter of interpretation identifies two different transition areas. One is a 150-foot transition area, and then a larger 250-foot transition area is associated with an area where there's swamp pink, which is a threatening endangered species. with an area where there's swamp pink, which is a threatening endangered species. In general, it's the transition from the 150-foot to 250-foot transition area occurs at this angle point in the property line, which will become more evident on future exhibits.
So all necessary permits, because Mr. Clay and Mr. Peter asked, that all necessary permits required from the DEP with regard to the environmental constraints have been obtained, correct?
That's correct. There's one more that I want to mention.
Go ahead.
That's the Special Activity Transition Area Waiver Individual Permit. That was also issued on January 25th, 2018, and that required deed-restricted conservation areas. And again, there's no onsite disturbances proposed in that regulated area. There was also a de minimis modification issued to that individual permit, that was November 23rd of 2018, which specifically approved the proposed stormwater management design.
And how long did it take for all of these DEP approvals to be obtained, Daphne?
Yeah. It took about 18 months to obtain those approvals through DEP, and the reason we went through that process was because we wanted to identify the significant constraints associated with development of the property. And I also wanted to mention that copies of those approvals that I just listed were provided to the township.
All right. Sticking with existing conditions, can you describe the topography of the site?
Sure. The topography of the site is a gentle to moderate slope towards the wetlands in the cedar brook, or cedar branch, I'm sorry. The highest elevation is approximately 171, which occurs in the western section of the site, and the lowest elevation of approximately 124 is along the cedar branch near the northwesterly corner of the property. Regrading of the site is limited to the higher elevations of the site, not the more sensitive lower elevations of the wetlands and the stream tributary.
Excuse me, Ms. Galvin, could you, could you just slow down just a little bit for our secretary here?
Sure.
If that's possible, thank you.
Okay. This, the general drainage pattern that I described, which is generally that the site drains towards the wetlands and the stream, is not changing as a result of the development of the parcel.
All right. Another aspect of existing conditions, Daphne, that I want to discuss are the soil conditions. Can you please go over those?
Sure. The soil's conditions are based upon mapping from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the National Resource Conservation Service, and they're identified as mostly sandy soils, except for those within the tributary and the wetland areas, which are more of a mucky material. A significant amount of geotechnical investigation has been performed as part of the previous approvals and also during the current design phase, and this information was utilized as the basis of site development and stormwater management design. Additional detail regarding the soil's conditions will be provided during my testimony about stormwater management.
Okay. Why don't we go to the overall site? If you can pull up that exhibit. And, Mr. Chairman, all these exhibits were pre-marked, so they already have a marking on them. Ms. Galvin, if you could identify what Exhibit A3 is for the record, please?
Sure. It's entitled "The Overall Site Rendering: South Section of Jackson Park." It was prepared by Partner dated November 9th of 2020, has the date stamp of November 16th on it.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, what we plan on doing is an overview of the entire property, and then we'll go into the individual components and the individual aspects of your board professional review letters as Ms. Galvin continues her testimony. So, Ms. Galvin, why don't you just give an overview first of the roadways and proposed driveways for the site?
Sure. Still using Exhibit A3, I've zoomed in a little bit on the development parcel. The proposed roadways, I'm sorry, the proposed public roadways, the private driveways and all parking areas are shown in a light gray. The proposed buildings are shown as brown. The water areas, which include the existing stream areas, as well as the wet ponds for stormwater management, are shown in blue. We also have dry stormwater infiltration basins that have sand bottoms and are shown in a light tan. There's three of those throughout the site. The landscape and other open areas of the site are shown in shades of green, different shades of green, which I'll describe later on. The landscaping on the rendering includes deciduous, evergreen, and ornamental trees, but no shrubs due to the scale of the exhibit. We'll identify the proposed tree line, which is a solid line, a squittily solid line, to identify the proposed tree line. There are fences and walls proposed in various areas of the sites, and we will provide additional detailing for those improvements as requested by Mr. Peters.
Okay. Can you just identify, now that we're in the proposed condition, where some of those constraints were located, such as the wetlands and some of the streams that you referenced earlier?
Sure. So, on this plan, again, north is generally up. Here's the cedar branch of the Toms River that kind of meanders along the northerly property line. There's, the constraints lines are identified within the center of the site. The dark solid line, the jagged solid line, is the wetlands line, and then there's an offset from that line to respect the transition areas that are associated with the wetlands. It's, the transition area is 150 feet wide, so from about this angle point, which I had identified on the aerial, from that point heading in a northeasterly direction, we have that 150-foot buffer. And then from this point heading northwesterly, the buffer, the transition area is increased to 250 feet due to the presence of swamp pink in this general area right here.
So all the wetlands buffers and flood hazard area buffers are all respected by the proposed condition, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's no disturbances proposed in those regulated areas.
So this plan is in compliance with the DEP permits received?
That's correct.
All right. You indicated that there are 129 acres that compose the property, or approximately 129 acres. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Can you just explain the 31 acres or so that are deed-restricted as a result of the conservation easement?
Sure. The deed-restricted areas are generally the wetland buffer areas, which are identified by the dashed line and the darker shade of green that runs generally along the northerly property line. In addition, we have some undisturbed wooded areas that are identified as BMP areas for best management practices. Those are stormwater management facilities, but they're undisturbed and wooded. Those are also deed-restricted. There's one location, one area here, and there's another area over here next to the infiltration basin. So there's a total of 31.4 acres of deed-restricted areas as a result of the permits issued by NJDEP.
Can you speak to some of the zoning compliance for the project?
Sure. Let me just provide a couple more, can I just provide some more areas relative?
All right.
Yeah, yeah. So I mentioned that there's 31.4 acres of deed-restricted areas for the conservation easements. Another 12.2 acres have been set aside for stormwater management facilities, which leaves about 85 acres that we would be able to develop once we pull out those constrained areas. We're proposing to develop approximately 75 of those acres, such that we are not touching 10 acres that are actually available for development. Overall, the approximate 80 acres, 88 acres of disturbance over the 129-acre site represents about 68% of the parcel, or about 2/3.
So why don't we get into the proposed development and compliance with the zoning requirements in the MF-AH8 zone?
Sure. So the development-
Well, so, excuse me, can you repeat that question? We didn't understand.
Okay. Ms. Galvin, can you go over compliance for the project with the zoning requirements in the MF-AH8 zone?
Sure. So, the development will comply with the zoning requirements of the MF-AH8 zone. In the most recent reviews, the board consultants had identified several variances. The first one is related to a minimum parking setback from a road or drive aisle where it's required to be 25 feet, and the layout proposes on-street parking within the right-of-way. This will be addressed by the project planner and traffic engineer, but from a site engineering perspective, the proposed parking is appropriately designed, it's safe and efficient, and has no adverse impact on the residents or others utilizing the parking.
And we'll get into those in a little bit more detail during both Ms. Galvin and Mr. Verterese's testimony.
Correct. There was one other variance that had been identified, and that was the minimum building setback for a multifamily building to a parking area, which is required to be 20 feet. Mr. Peters had indicated in his letter that only 18 feet was provided in certain sections. He was kind enough to provide a sketch of the locations where we did not comply with the 20-foot requirement, and I've confirmed that the plans can be modified to eliminate that variance. The general locations of the deficient setbacks is this pocket over to, in the southwest corner of the site, where I'm circling it with my hand. Those four buildings over there. By eliminating that parking variance to comply with the zoning, we're not creating any other form of relief that would be necessary. In addition to the variance, the consultants identified various design waivers, all of which will be eliminated with revised plans. The development is also substantially consistent with the residential site improvement standards, with the de minimis exception of right-of-way widths in the townhouse areas, which will be testified to later by the traffic engineer and project planner. A note will be added to the plans regarding RSIS compliance, including any exceptions. Okay, I'm going to move on to site access and circulation.
Okay.
Okay. Site access is provided from West Veterans Highway in this location right here, where I'm circling. It's provided via a public right-of-way in a boulevard configuration as it comes in off of West Veterans Highway. We also have emergency access to West Veterans Highway in the southeastern corner of the site, near the end of one of the stacked townhouse driveways. This access drive will accommodate emergency vehicles and will be surfaced with grass pavers. We will provide emergency vehicle turning templates for the entire multifamily area as requested by Mr. Peters. As I mentioned before, the public roadways and parking areas are substantially compliant with the RSIS standards. We will also provide internal striping and signage information for vehicular and pedestrian site circulation. Additional sidewalks and crosswalks on Roads 3 and 6, as requested by Mr. Peters, will be provided. That's in this area right here where I'm circling, and then right over here, this provides, or this will allow for a continuous sidewalk throughout the parcel. A crosswalk will also be added at the intersection of West Veterans Highway and our proposed entry road. That crosswalk is actually already on the design plans that have been submitted to the county, because it's under county jurisdiction. All the other minor traffic, parking, and circulation comments raised by the consultants will be addressed. The project will meet all handicap accessibility requirements. Also wanted to add that site access and circulation are under the purview of the fire district, and that I have met twice in the past with Scott Roush of District Number 2 during the early design stages prior to the initial submission, and then a second time during the design of the north section application. We will continue to work with Mr. Roush to satisfy his comments on the south section. He has already approved the proposed hydrant locations for the project.
Before we move on to the next category, Mr. Gertner, does the board or the board professionals have any questions, or would you rather us finish Ms. Galvin's complete testimony before you ask? Okay, so we'll keep going. Daphne, can you describe the four types of residential structures to be located on the property?
Sure. The first type of residential structure are the single-family homes. To access the single-family homes, you come in the main driveway, make the first right onto Road 2, and work your way up in a northeasterly direction. That brings you into another boulevard section of roadway, and on either side of the boulevard is a total of 22 single-family lots. Get the circle at the end of that boulevard, converge off to the north, where there's another cul-de-sac that contains 18 dwellings, and then further down to the south, a cul-de-sac that contains 16, I'm sorry, 21 dwellings, for a grand total of 61 family lots. The minimum lot size for the single family are 9,000 square feet. All the bulk standards associated with the single-family lots, including setbacks and coverages, will be met. Parking for the single-family homes is provided via two-car garages and two-car driveways, and the total number of parking spaces for the single family exceeds the number required by the RSIS standards.
And the traffic engineer will get more into the parking and compliance, correct?
Yeah, more detailed breakdown, correct. The second type of home that's being proposed are townhouses. Again, to access the townhouses, you come in off of West Veterans Highway into the boulevard section of the roadway, converge to the right onto Road 2, and then bear to the left in this pocket right in here are the traditional townhouse structures. There's a total of 168 units in buildings that contain either four, five, or six units. And by the way, it does extend into the back, I'm sorry, I meant to indicate that the townhouses, the traditional townhouses do extend into the back and into the southwest corner of the property. All of the bulk standards, such as setbacks and building separation, will be met, and parking for the townhouses are provided with two-car garages and one-car driveways, plus perpendicular on-street parking for guests. The total number of spaces proposed exceed the RSIS requirement for this use. The third type of residential structure that's proposed is what's known as a stacked townhouse unit. To access the stacked townhouse unit, again, come in off of West Veterans Highway, bear off to the left on Road 1, and this area headed down to the southeastern corner, and then up in a westerly direction are the stacked townhouse units. The, Mr. Newman will provide a description of the different structures and the difference between the stacked units and the traditional townhouse units. There are a total of 176 units in those buildings. Each of the buildings contain either eight or 12 units per building. All of the bulk standards, such as setbacks and building separation, will be met. Parking for the stacked units is provided with one-car garages and one-car driveways, plus perpendicular on-street parking for guests, and the total number of parking spaces proposed exceeds the RSIS requirement.
So again, as to the stacked townhomes, all the zoning requirements and RSIS standards are met?
That's correct.
Okay. What's the final type of structure on the property, residential structure?
Yeah, the final type of residential structure are the multifamily units, which are located in the northwesterly corner. There's a total of 144 units in these six buildings. There are 24 units per building. Within the 144 units, there are 100 affordable units. All of the bulk standards, such as setbacks and building separation, will be met in this area for these structures. Parking is proposed in surface parking lots immediately adjacent to the structures. The total number of spaces proposed is in excess of the RSIS requirement, and also with respect to these buildings, we're providing trash and recyclable areas with trash enclosures located proximate to the buildings, because there's no indoor areas for storage of trash in these buildings.
Okay. And Mr. Newman will go through operational issues concerning trash and recycling pickup?
Yes.
Ms. Galvin, if I could just-
Ms. Galvin, if I could just ask you one question. When you were speaking about one of the buildings having two-car garages, you stated that there's room for one car on the driveway. How does that work? That doesn't seem right.
Yeah, so what happens with the townhouses, just based on the width of the driveway? The driveways aren't wide enough, the driveways themselves aren't wide enough for the, to get credit for the second space. They're just too narrow. I believe they are 15 feet wide.
But if you testified that there was a two-car garage, so to me that means that they're side by side. So how could the driveway only fit one car?
Well, it technically, it technically because of the width that's required to get credit for two spaces in the driveway. We can't provide that width. It's physically wide enough for the two cars to get into access to the garages, but it's not wide enough to get credit for two spaces in the driveway. Mister.
So Mr. Verterese can speak more to this. But to sum up what you're saying, you're not taking credit for the additional parking space that could go in the driveway because under RSIS, it's not wide enough for it to get credit for two spaces?
That's correct.
Right, but Mr. Verterese, to answer the chairman's question, can you go into more detail on that issue?
Correct.
If you could finish up with the multifamily unless you did so already.
Yeah, I think we've, I've gone through the four different types of units, dwelling units. Everything complies from a zoning standpoint, and there's, and we exceed the parking standards that are required for all of the units.
Okay, we also have a clubhouse located on the property, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you go over and describe that area?
Sure. Right at the entry drive off of West Veterans Highway, we've got a clubhouse proposed just to the right of the entrance drive. The clubhouse itself is approximately 6,137 square feet. There's a pool in the rear of the clubhouse. There's also an storage, equipment building, equipment storage building, I'm sorry, and a tot lot just off to the side of the community building. The parking lot provides space for 62 parking spaces, which is consistent with the township code of one space per 100 square feet. So we need that requirement. And. That's it. Anything else about?
Yeah, before you leave the clubhouse, can you also go over, as Mr. Cle requested, the pump station and compliance with the conditional use standards?
Sure, let me, I just want to go back to the, the community facility building for one moment.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, there had been some discussion through the consultants and through the court master about providing additional recreation facilities. So what we're going to propose is an additional tot lot. I think the intent was to provide something closer to the multifamily buildings. So we're going to propose a second tot lot in this general area where my hand is moving around right here. And in addition, we wanted to provide some additional passive recreation uses. So we're going to provide some benches in the rear corner up against the existing wooded area, and also along the wet pond for passive recreation use.
But it's your testimony that the plan as proposed complies, but these are some additional items requested by the board professionals and the special master?
That's correct.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that. Can you speak now to the conditional use requirement for the utilities?
Sure. At the end of the cul-de-sac of Road 8, there's a pump station proposed, a sanitary sewer pump station. That has certain conditional use standards that have to be met. One of the standards is that the lot area has to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. We're proposing 20,737 square feet. And the second requirement is that the minimum lot width is required to be 100 feet, and we're at approximately 130 feet. So we need the two conditional use requirements for that use.
Okay, and I know we're going to speak about utilities later in a little bit more detail. Can you just describe Prosper Town Road and what's proposed with Prosper Town Road, which both Mr. Peters and Mr. Cle identify in their letters?
Sure, just a second, because I'm going to pull up that exhibit. Okay.
Again, just identify the exhibit, Ms. Galvin.
Sure. So this is Exhibit A7. It's entitled "Final Major Subdivision, Jackson Park South, Phase 1." It's Sheet 3 of 6. It was prepared by partner and dated January 31 of 2019, and was revised July 14 of 2020. The date stamp of November 16 on it also. Right, so I'm just going to zoom in a little bit, so hold on a second. Zooming in on Exhibit A7. Okay, so as I had previously mentioned, the existing right-of-way for Prosper Town Road is an unimproved right-of-way with a dirt path that meanders in and out of the right-of-way. It might be a little tough to see, but there's a series of parallel dashed lines which identify the existing path. Starts down at this end here, works its way running generally north of the existing right-of-way, and eventually comes back into the existing right-of-way before it exits at the westerly side of the property. So the intent with this plan was to maintain the, that existing path in this area and creating easement around the path to, to keep it open for public, continued public access. That also allowed us to vacate this hatched portion of the Prosper Town Road right-of-way, because the path is actually going to fall within the easement. We also were proposing a crossing of our proposed Road 8 in this location right here. And this general configuration was what was approved back in 2007, which is why we had maintained this approach. But there had been some comments raised by both the board consultants and by the court master. So we're proposing some modifications to that that we think will help address those concerns. So I'm going to go to another exhibit. Exhibit A7A. It's entitled "The Prosper Town Road Exhibit." It was prepared by partner, dated November 12 of 2020, with a date stamp of November 16, 2020. And I'm now going to zoom into this one also. Hold on just a second, trying to show the extent of it. Okay. So the area in purple here was the area that was shown to be vacated on the previous plan. We're maintaining the vacation of section of the right-of-way, and we're also going to maintain the alignment of the existing path as it runs just north of the right-of-way.
Daphne, before you finish describing it, just, you referenced the 2007 approval earlier.
Yes.
Give the board and the public, just who are not aware of that approval, just two sentences of what that approval was?
Sure, that was the approval for, it was a single approval for both the north and the south sections of the project. It was granted in 2007 for, I don't remember the total unit count. Project. But, but within the south section, it included vacation of a portion of the Prosper Town Road right-of-way, as well as creation of an easement to maintain the existing path configuration through that area.
Okay, continue with what, what's described or shown in purple.
Okay. So again, in purple is the area that's proposed to be vacated, which is consistent with what we had previously approved. Also, we're being consistent with the fact that we're maintaining the path through this area here, which is shown in blue. And we're also proposing the easement, which is shown in red. So that's consistent with what was approved in 2007 and what was initially submitted to the board. But we've tried to make some revisions to what's proposed for the overall right-of-way, which we think is an improvement. For example, once we cross over Road 8, we wanted to bring the path back into the existing right-of-way to avoid any additional right-of-way that had to be vacated. So we realigned the path slightly, and that's shown in yellow, such that we can reconstruct the path within the existing right-of-way. And as it heads over in a westerly direction, it eventually connects back into the existing path and then works its way off the westerly end of the porch of the site. So the, the area that's being reconstructed and or relocated would be an eight-foot-wide path that has a sand or some other natural bottom of it, surface.
You also have two notes on the plan pointing to the yellow on the, on the left of the page and the right of the page. Can you explain what those notes are?
Sure, so that note describes what's being proposed for the portions of the path that's being relocated. The path will be an eight-foot-wide clearing. Should be clean sand or other natural surface. It will also be maintained by, on an annual basis, by the homeowners association. And the intent is to create a path that runs from the westerly property line all the way through the site. And in this area over here also, to relocate the existing path all the way to West Veterans Highway, such that there's a continuous connection from West Veterans Highway through the existing right-of-way, through the proposed easement, back into the existing right-of-way and out the westerly side of the, of the parcel.
Okay, can you go back to Exhibit A3?
Sure.
I believe that was your number.
A3.
What you mean by that it's going to be maintained by the HOA on an annual basis?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I will have, that is part of Mitch Newman's testimony. He's going to go through all of the HOA responsibilities, and I promise he will identify and address that issue. All right, Ms. Galvin, I think this is the exhibit that we want to use to demonstrate compliance with the buffering requirements of the project.
Okay, so, yes, you're correct. So back to Exhibit A3, this is a zoomed-in version of Exhibit A3. There is a 50-foot tracked boundary buffer that essentially restricts improvements within the buffer to entry roads, gatehouses, signs, utilities, fences, or walls. We have honored that buffer. You can see it extends all the way around the main parcel and then also around the smaller parcel up to the north. That's the 50-foot track buffer. As requested by, or as required by Mr. Peters in his review letter, we will also supplement the plantings within the buffer in areas that are, that needed to be supplemented just due to the lack of vegetation in those areas or proximity to the property line. Do you want me to move on to the open space?
Yeah, I want to talk about the open space areas on the site.
Okay. So as I had mentioned earlier, again, on Exhibit A3, the areas that are shaded in green are open space areas with one exception. The lightest green color, which is the lawn areas associated with the single-family lots, those are not counted in the open space calculations. So the rest of the green areas are counted, just not the lighter green on the single-family, on the single-family lots. So the ordinance has specific definitions and calculations for open space standards, including a calculation which incorporates environmentally constrained areas. The project complies with the requirements as follows. The first calculation has to do with minimum open space based on the gross tract area. The requirement is that we put 25% of the gross tract area as open space. We're providing a total of 74.8 acres, where only 32.3 acres are required, such that approximately double requirement for the open space calculation based on gross tract area. The second calculation for open space is the minimum that's required exclusive of environmentally constrained areas. That requirement is 50% of the normal requirement. If the normal requirement was 32.3 acres, then we've got to provide at least half of that, or 16.2 acres, that's not environmentally constrained. In this case, we're providing 32.9 acres, again, more than double what's required to meet this open space calculation. As I had noted earlier, some of the open space areas will actually be deed restricted as conservation areas. This was required by the DEP Special Activity Transition Area Waiver Individual Permit issued on January 25 of 2018. Those are the darkest of the green areas that identify the deed-restricted areas. The medium green shading reflects open space that's outside of the deed-restricted areas and includes recreation areas and landscaping. As I mentioned, the lightest green doesn't count towards open space because it's, it's located on a single-family lot. So I want to give another breakdown for the open space areas. So as I mentioned before, the darkest area, which is the green, is 31.4 acres of the site, which is 24% of the site. There are no permanent improvements proposed in these areas. They will remain wooded. These areas will be operated and maintained by the homeowners association, except as restricted by easements of the utility such as the JTMUA. In addition to those dark green areas, we've got the other green open space areas, I'll call them the medium green color, total of 43.5 acres, which is approximately 33.6% of the gross land areas. The improvements in these areas are pretty much limited to landscaping improvements, and portions of these areas will remain undisturbed and wooded. For example, right in here, this is the proposed tree line, and this area is not being disturbed between the tree line and the wetlands buffer. So that's actually a wooded area as part of the open space. Similar to the deed-restricted areas, the, this open space area will be operated and maintained by the homeowners association unless there's a, an easement to one of the utility companies. I think I mentioned already that within the south section, we've got the recreation area that has the clubhouse, the pool, and the tot lot, along with parking. And then we were proposing an additional tot lot and some additional benches, all of which is being maintained by the homeowners association. And in addition to the areas running generally along the northerly property line that are deed-restricted, I wanted to note that there's significant off-site areas that are associated with the Colliers Mills Wildlife Management Area and also parcels that are owned by the township and the county that were part of the development parcel back at the time of the original approval. So these areas are also deed-restricted from any development.
What I would like to do now is talk about utilities. It comes up in both Mr. Peters' and Mr. Cle's letter. So why don't we go to Exhibit A4, and please identify that for the record?
Sure. It's entitled "The On-Site and Off-Site Water and Sewer Alignments, the North and South Sections, Jackson Park, Prepared by Partner, Dated May 18 of 2018 and Revised November 12 of 2020, with a date stamp of November 16, 2020." Let me leave that alone, sorry. I'm going to leave that alone to get started. So first, we'll talk about water and sewer. So let me get, let me get everybody orientated, I'm sorry. The north parcel is in this area right in here. This is Perrineville Road. Perrineville Road comes down and ultimately intersects with Cassville Road, and then West Veterans Highway runs generally along the bottom of the sheet. And the south section is in this area right here. North is generally straight up in this, on this exhibit. So the, so the applicant has been coordinating with the JTMUA over the last few years regarding water and sewer service to the project for both the north and the south sections. The JTMUA granted preliminary approval to both north and south sections on September 27 of 2019. All of the water and sewer facilities, including the onsite pump stations, will be operated and maintained by the JTMUA. All of the water and sewer facilities, including the onsite pump stations, will be operated and maintained by the JTMUA. And because potable water and sewer services don't exist to the project, they need to be extended. So I'm going to talk about the extension to provide water first. So again, we have our south section down at the bottom of the sheet here. I'm going to zoom in on this. Hold on. So again, I'm zooming in on exhibit A four. South section is down at the bottom of the sheet here. The water for the south section is proposed to go through an existing easement. Through adjoining lot five point O two, which is owned by the county. Until it hits a public right of way known as Berezny Lane. Berezny Lane then works its way out to Perrineville Road. Where the where the south section water improvements will connect to improvements previously proposed by the north section. In addition to the connection through the open space area and out to Perrineville Road, we're also providing. Water service along. West Veterans Highway from the south section all the way along West Veterans. Until it intersects with Cassville Road and then from Cassville Road. Up to the intersection of Thompson Bridge Road, where again it connects to water facilities proposed by the north section project. So that's the improvements for water to service the south section. With respect to sanitary sewer, as I mentioned before, we have a pump station. In the south section, which is approximately where I'm circling right now. That pump station will then force the sewer flow. Push it through a force main through the same easement as the water is proposed. To Berezny Lane and out to Perrineville Road. And then the force may will continue up Perrineville Road and onto the north section site where there's another pump station. The pump station on the north section site then pumps flow from both the north section and the south section. Up along Perrineville Road all the way to Six Flags. Great Adventure where there's a existing pump station being upgraded by the applicant.
And Mr. Newman can talk about again operations and maintenance of those facilities in more detail, correct?
That's correct, although I can tell you that everything's being maintained by the JTMUA with respect to the water and sewer. I did just want to mention one other thing is that the applicant already has an agreement in place with the JTMUA. And with Six Flags regarding the sanitary sewer service for the entire project. Including the upgrade to the existing pump station at Six Flags. And this upgrade benefits the JTMUA and the services it provides to other customers, not just to the Jackson Park project.
Can you briefly, I think if you could go back to exhibit A three? Just to have that on there. So in terms of solid waste disposal, garbage and recycling. Can you describe where the how that will work? And then Mr. Newman can discuss how it by the HOA and the condo association.
Sure. So for the for the single family and the townhouse units. Trash recyclable and bulk pickup will be curbside pickup, similar to the way it's done through the rest of the township. For the multifamily areas, for the six buildings, there are actually dumpster enclosures. Combinate trash recyclable and bulk items. Those will also be that that will be coordinated through the homeowners association for pickup of those of those wastes.
We also talked about utilities with regard to sanitary and water, but other utilities telecommunications, electric. Gas, those all being provided.
That's correct. All of those services will be provided.
Okay, can we now discuss some of the improvements along West Veterans Highway? I know Mr. Viterisi will get into access, but you could explain some from a site stand civil standpoint.
Sure. So West Veterans Highway still on exhibit A three. So what West Veterans Highway runs along the bottom of the sheet here. So West Veterans Highway known as County Route five twenty eight will be widened. On the project side and sidewalk installed along the entire length of the improvement. There's also a deceleration lane as you enter the site from the from the east. And again, Mr. Vertories will provide some additional detailing of those improvements.
Okay, I want to now move to landscaping. Can you go over the landscape design for the south parcel?
Sure. So we're still on exhibit A three. The landscape design for the south section includes a combination of native shade, ornamental and evergreen trees along the streets. And in the buffers and common areas. A mix of native and non-native shrub and ground cover species were used due to concerns with deer. The infiltration basin side slopes are seeded with a native grass species. And the other areas are seeded with a typical lawn grass. Based on Mr. Peters comments regarding a design waiver. For not providing the shade tree shade trees along West Veterans Highway, we're actually going to modify the plans. And agree to include the new shade trees along the entire length. We had limited the shade trees to the entry side of the roadway adjacent to the community building. As well as filling in a gap in the existing wood line along West Veterans Highway. But in an attempt to eliminate any design waivers, we'll agree to extend. The shade trees at forty to fifty foot intervals along the rest of the portion of West Veterans Highway.
And Daphne, that also includes the utility easement set forth in Mr. Peters's letter as well?
Yeah, that's correct. There's a typical six foot wide shade tree and utility easement. That's typically adjacent to the right of way lines that we will also include along West Veterans Highway.
Thank you.
All right, a couple of other minor landscape comments. Mr. Peters had raised, it was an issue about some street trees. Over in the vicinity of road three and road ten, which I'm circling right now and you can see kind of a red bubble over there. We have to add another tree or modify the spacing of these trees to meet the required spacing from the ordinance. We'll also add all the site triangle easements within the site. As requested by Mr. Peters and any other of the minor comments. That were requested by Mr. Peters or Mr. Cle will be addressed.
So Daphne, as to landscaping, if you hadn't hit it in direct, you agreed all the comments in Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters's letters. As they relate to landscaping, I will comply with all the requirements.
That's correct. I add one comment about irrigation. There is irrigation proposed throughout the common areas. Such as the clubhouse and the entry boulevards and the signage areas. There's no irrigation proposed for the single family lots or the townhouse or multifamily areas. You want to talk about Harvard West next?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to go to another exhibit. This is exhibit A eight. It's entitled, let's see, Landscape Plan Prepared by Speesel Architects. Dated January thirty first of two thousand nineteen. So this plan was was the initial submission of the south section. So I wanted to orientate the board and the public. To a change that we had made subsequent to the initial submission. So the roadway over here, the cul-de-sac is Harvard West Drive. There are two homes at the end of the cul-de-sac. These homes are about between fifty and sixty five feet from our property line, which is this line right here. Okay, um, there's. Proposed townhouses another fifty feet away from the. Hold on just a second. Oh, okay. So the proposed townhouses are required to be a minimum of fifty feet away, but we're actually proposing them at about eighty five feet away in this location to increase the setback. From what's normally required. So the total distance between the existing homes and in the townhouses is somewhere between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty feet away. Because of that increased distance. From an elevation standpoint, the rear of the existing homes that front on Harvard West at the end of the cul-de-sac. It grades up towards the property line. And actually, in the existing condition, it continues to grade up to where the townhouses are proposed. What we've done though is we've we're regrading this area. To cut this down by about twenty feet so that we can tuck the townhouses in. To the slope as opposed to putting them at the top of the slope. We think that provides a better visual from the existing homes on Harvard West Drive. So that they're 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 down a little bit lower. To accommodate that, we had to build a retaining wall approximately five hundred feet long. To allow for us to drop the grade down enough to have a a an impact on the a positive impact on the visuals from Harvard West. Just to give a frame of reference. The finished floor elevations of the townhouses. Are slightly lower than the finished floor elevations of the existing homes. As opposed to being significantly higher, which would have occurred had we left the existing grade where it was.
So those changes were in addition to complying with the buffer requirement, correct?
That's the buffer line actually can see on here is the solid line. If you follow the hand, it's the solid line right here. Runs across like this at that fifty foot dimension that continues up in a westerly direction. But what I wanted to mention here was that as part of the initial landscape plan, we had proposed to install. This screening, which is a double staggered row of evergreens, a combination of white pines and Colorado spruces. Planted at eight to ten feet high. What we determined was that because of the elevation that these were being installed at, which is down behind the townhouses and down at the base of the retaining wall. We really didn't think that the effective screening for Harvard West. Was as efficient as it could be. So we proposed to modify it when we submitted the most recent set of plans. So I'm going to move to exhibit A eight A. And that's identified as the landscape plan, again, prepared by Speesel Architects. Dated January thirty first, two thousand nineteen and revised July fifteenth of two thousand twenty. So what we did was we shifted that row of plantings from from down lower up to the top of the hill near the property line. Such that it provides a more efficient screen from the existing residential dwellings into the townhouse area. So this was part of the the submission that was made to the board in January with the rest of the site plan documents.
Anything else you want to add on landscaping?
No.
Okay, let's move on to lighting.
Okay, for lighting, let's go back to A three. The zoomed in version of exhibit A three. So the lighting design along the public roadways, the driveways and the parking areas. Consist of lantern style post top light fixtures. The luminaires use full cutoff LED technology and will be installed at a sixteen foot mounting height. At approximate seventy five foot intervals as needed to meet the lighting requirements for the various areas. The proposed fixtures are approved by the utility company, JC P and L. The township will own and maintain the fixtures within the public right of ways. And the homeowners association will own and maintain all the other lighting. We will we will address the minor comments that Mr. Peters raised regarding lighting levels. Such that we can eliminate any design waivers associated with those lighting levels. Will also address any other minor comments raised by Mr. Peters or Mr. Cle regarding lighting.
Do you see any negative impacts as a result of the lighting design on the adjacent property?
No.
Oh, Daphne, one thing that we didn't I didn't ask you, will you comply with all of Mr. Peters's comments regarding solid waste disposal that he notes on page sixteen of his report?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't cover that when we went over trash and recycling. Okay, I think we're up to stormwater management.
Correct.
So I'd like you to describe the stormwater management design for this project.
Okay, so still using the zoomed in version of exhibit A three. The proposed stormwater management design is comprehensive and consistent with the design previously approved by Jackson Township. The Ocean County Saul Conservation District, NJDEP and US Fish and Wildlife. Further, the NJDEP Special Activity Transition Area Waiver. Individual permit issued in January of two thousand eighteen. Approved a detailed design that served as the basis for the current design. The project is classified as a major development. So the stormwater design must comply with RSIS and the NJDEP Stormwater Management Regulations. Under NJAC seven colon eight and the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. Which requires the design to meet erosion control, groundwater recharge. Stormwater runoff quantity and stormwater runoff quality standards. The design is also required to address non-structural stormwater management strategies to the maximum extent practicable. Issuance of the NJDEP Special Activity Transition Area Waiver Individual Permit confirms compliance with these regulations. So next I want to give you an overview of the methods of controlling and managing stormwater on the site. So the stormwater management design intent is to maintain and infiltrate. The runoff onsite to the maximum extent practicable. There are three infiltration basins. They are shown in the light tan color. It's one there, one right here, and a smaller one over by the pump station. These infiltration basins have been designed to provide stormwater rate reductions, water quality and recharge. The infiltration basins are designed with a six inch sand bottom. That is separated by a minimum of two feet to the seasonal high water table as required by the standards. There are no dam classifications associated with any of the infiltration basins. In addition to the infiltration basins, we have two wet ponds up by West Veterans Highway. These wet ponds provide stormwater rate reductions and also water quality benefits. Although we didn't take any credit for water quality since that function is provided within the infiltration basins. And the sump areas that surround the limit of disturbance for the property. Three undisturbed wooded BMP areas, large one right here in in the center of the site. Smaller one over here adjacent to the infiltration basin. So there's probably two, I'm sorry, two, not three. Signed such that if the the runoff into these areas exceeds their capacity. They simply overflow into the piped stormwater system in the roadways and ultimately down to the infiltration basins. In addition, there are forty perimeter sump areas. That collect and infiltrate runoff from limited areas that can't be directed to the infiltration basins, for example. The rear yards of the single family houses that grade off into the wetland area. Those rear yards can't be directed into an infiltration basin, so we collect them in small sump areas to allow for infiltration of that limited amount of runoff. The stormwater sewer system collects and conveys stormwater runoff to the infiltration basins and the wet ponds. The project area has been graded to provide the for adequate separation from the seasonal high water table. To the stormwater management facilities and also for adequate storm sewer conveyance. And this grading scheme also allows for basements in most of the single family dwellings. We have a total of sixty one lots. We're able to get fifty six basements in the sixty one lots. We have nineteen conventional basements and thirty seven English basements for the total of fifty six. The remaining five single family lots are proposed to have slams. As part of our design, we've also prepared an operation and maintenance manual. In accordance with the NJDEP guidance document that's entitled Stormwater Management Facilities Maintenance Manual. The manual identifies the entity responsible for implementing the manual along with operations and maintenance instructions for facilities and equipment.
Daphne, just while you're describing the maintenance, just maybe we should just make sure the board's aware. Who maintains the basins and all the stormwater infrastructure?
The homeowners association will be maintaining all of the stormwater management facilities.
Okay.
Um, as I was saying about this, the operation and maintenance manual, there's an appendix within that manual that includes various checklists and logs to facilitate the process. There will be no negative impacts on the adjacent properties. And to summarize it, the design is comprehensive and incorporates the existing site conditions and meets the applicable design standards. And again, it's noted that all the facilities will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. And finally, I believe that Mr. Cle had found the stormwater management, the overall stormwater management design to be acceptable. And we will address any of his minor remaining comments regarding the stormwater design.
And Daphne, I think there was a third BMP in the southeast of the larger BMP. I just, it wasn't labeled, but I recall us going over it. So I think there was a third one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Okay. I think we're up to the soil conditions on the property. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so, I'm sorry.
Ms. Galvin, you stated there's some barriers behind most of the single family residences. Will these sump areas allow for standing water? And if so, at what point will the standing water accumulate?
Yeah, so the sump areas are designed, again, to provide a separation to the seasonal high water table so that the water will infiltrate into the ground. Also, they have a maximum depth. They're only a foot deep. So these are, these are not large, deep, broad areas that collect significant amount of runoff. They they collect very limited areas that were were unable to direct into the rest of the stormwater system. So there are small areas that are very shallow and are able to recharge that runoff into the ground.
But at what rate? I mean, you're not, if we get a dilute like we've been getting, how long is that water going to sit before it's gone?
The, the, well, what happens first, if if the, if the amount of flow going to the sump areas exceeds the capacity of the sump area. There's a, there's a small berm on the downhill side of it. It just overflows the berm and works its way down into the in general into the wetland areas. With respect to the permeability rate, the material in this in these areas is generally sandy. And with the fact that we have a maximum depth on the sumps of only one foot. I would expect that the water infiltrates, that the runoff infiltrates probably within a day or so. I can get an actual calculation for that. I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head. It's not long term because of the minimum depth. It's not a long term situation.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just because the court reporter is asking you to, the board member who asked the question just identify himself for the record, if that's okay?
Yeah, Martin Fleming, sorry.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to make, the court reporter just wants to get the record correct, that's all. Okay, um, if there's no more questions on that issue, I'll have Daphne speak about the soil conditions on the property.
Sure, uh, let's, we're going to go to another exhibit to do that. So this is exhibit A5. It's entitled Soil Testing Locations, South Section of Jackson Park. Prepared by Partner dated March 16th of 2020 with a date stamp of 11/16/2020. Again, just to orientate everybody, north is generally up, West Veterans Highway is at the bottom of the site. The green areas are the areas that will that will be open space areas after the development outside of the single family lots. The geotechnical investigations were performed to determine the subsurface conditions impacting the stormwater management design. The current design is based on two rounds of testing, which resulted in 57 test pits, the red circles on the site. A majority of those of the investigation was done at the time of the previous approval back in oh six, oh seven timeframe. And then we did supplemental investigation back in 2018 at the time of the design for the south section. So that the test pits were excavated to collect depth to seasonal high groundwater based upon modeling and observed groundwater. Warings were also advanced to collect information on soil density at depths below the test pits. Groundwater monitoring wells were installed to collect data on groundwater levels during the wet season. The same geotechnical information was used in preparation of the proposed grading design and to determine whether basements in the single family dwellings were feasible. The detailed design criteria included maintaining a two foot separation between the basement floor elevation and the seasonal high water table. The options for the single family basements include the full basements, English basements or no basements, which is slab. And as I mentioned, that we were able to get out of the 61 single family homes, a total of 56 basements in those dwellings. We also understand that supplemental investigation may be required at the time of construction of the single family dwellings to confirm the seasonal high water table elevation.
Daphne, do you have anything else on the soil condition?
Excuse me?
Do you have anything else on the soil conditions or are you just taking a break?
Uh, yeah, I was just taking a break. No, there's nothing else on the soils condition. I'm just trying to figure out what's left.
I think we've addressed everything that we wanted to go over in direct unless you think there's anything else that you wanted to add.
Bill, I can't understand what you're saying.
Oh, sorry. I said, I think we we addressed everything indirect that we wanted to go over unless, Daphne, you feel there's anything else you'd like to discuss?
I, I do. I actually have two more minor items.
Go ahead.
To cover. Okay, I'm going to go to another exhibit. This is exhibit A6. It's entitled Site Entrance Signs and Sales Trailer Plan. Prepared by Partner dated January 31st of 2019 and revised to July 14th of 2020. It's sheet 65 of 65 in the site plan documents. So on this sheet over to the left, on the left side of the exhibit, we identify the location of the proposed temporary sales trailer, which is next to where the future clubhouse is proposed. The sales trailer is eight feet by 20 feet by 10 feet high.
And that complies with the ordinance. It was reduced.
That's right. Right, consistent with the ordinance. And we also identify the signage that's associated with the sales. The entry drive into the parking area and out of the main roadway at the main intersection with West Veterans Highway. And we detailed the sign on the bottom of the page here, and the sign is consistent also with the ordinance standards. And then with respect to project signage, that's the the right half of this exhibit. So the top view is the plan view. Again, West Veterans Highway runs from left to right. This is the main entry drive with the boulevard. And the sign is proposed right along here in between the main entry boulevard and the parking lot for the community building. And then this is an elevation view of the proposed sign. So we have one development sign proposed, which is what's allowed by ordinance. It's 32 square feet, non-illuminated, six and a half feet high. And it meets all of the size and setback requirements of the zone.
Okay, and Daphne, one question on the sign. It will not obstruct site distance?
That's correct. And when we revise the plans to include the various site triangle easements, that will become evident on here.
Thank you. Is there anything else you want to go over in your testimony?
I just have one more item on A3. Last topic, I just wanted to touch briefly upon earthwork for the south section. As I mentioned before, I mentioned the geotech information. So the geotechnical and the topographic conditions in the south section are different than the north section. So filling of the south section is not needed. We estimate that the south section will result in in potentially an export of material. Preliminary calculations identify approximately 70,000 yards of excess, although that number is likely to go down based on more detailed calculations. And that of that 70,000, about 20,000 of it is associated with the with the basements. So I just wanted to identify the fact that this is not a fill situation for the south section.
Um, Mr. Gertner, the court reporter has asked me if we could take a break. Is that, is that okay with the chip room? Or I should ask Mr. Chairman, is that?
Yes, I was actually waiting for Ms. Galvin to conclude her testimony.
Thank you. Daphne, you have nothing else to add, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That that concludes Ms. Galvin's direct testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, so we're going to take a 10 minute break. Does that sound good to everyone?
Sounds good to me.
Did you tell him that? Mr. Bell, are you ready?
I'm ready, yeah. I switched computers because hoping this mic would be better than before.
Oh, it is much better.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, it's up to the board, but I can call my next witness, Nicholas Verterisi from Dynamic Traffic.
Uh, before you do, I'd like to ask our professionals.
Sure.
Have any questions or comments with regards to the testimony that we heard from?
Sure.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple. And the first one being the issue of the of the parking. I think there was a testimony from Daphne that there was a two car garage. And we're not going to take any credit for the driveway because it was lacking in width. Is that correct?
I think, I think Nick will confirm that, but the the width of the driveway does not allow us to get credit for a two car wide driveway. Which Nick will describe in more detail. So you only get credit for one car in the driveway.
Okay, but it looks like that the is the, so there's two, a two car spot within the unit itself.
Correct. It's a two car garage. But the, but you need 20 feet to get credit for two cars in the driveway to get the two car credit for two cars in the driveway. Not 20, it's sufficient on that. Wide enough for to technically park there, you just don't get credit for it.
Why wouldn't you have the driveway wide enough to accommodate a two car garage?
The driveway, the garage opening, I believe is 16 feet wide. This is something that the Mitch, Mr. Newman can testify to as far as the width of the garage door opening. I believe it's 16 feet wide for a two car garage.
Okay, he's the architect, is that it?
What's that, Mr. Chairman? We didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
He's the architect, is that it?
Well, no, I think, I think Mr. Verterisi would be the best person to explain the the parking issue from a traffic engineering standpoint. But I think what Ms. Galvin was stating is that Mr. Newman, from a design standpoint, as a representative of the applicant can explain why it is designed and the fashion it is.
Okay, just seems odd and I'd like you to explain. Okay.
Um, just, just a couple more quick ones. Again, the O and M responsibilities for the drainage system. It's all going to be on the HOA?
Correct.
And Mr. Cle, Mr. Newman will go over all HOA responsibilities, including that during his testimony.
Okay, even the storm sewer that's in the public right of way portion of the project?
I knew you was going to ask that. I, I think that the the storm sewer system within the public right of way may be the responsibility of the township. The stormwater management facilities, the basins, the ponds, the infiltration basins, the BMP areas. Believe those were, those are definitely operated and maintained by the homeowners association.
So the collection system within the, so with the collection system within the public right of way, the pipes to catch basins will be only maintained by the by the township, but the discharge into these infiltration basins, that'll be taken care of by the HOA.
I believe so.
Part of the DEP permitting, I guess it was a general permit that allowed for some deviations from, I'll say, the local ordinances. How about the wet ponds? They were, I think, efficient as far as required tributary areas. DEP looked at them also and, you know.
Yes, and in fact, there was extensive discussion about that as part of the entire stormwater management design, everything from the infiltration basins to the tributary areas to the wet ponds. That was all part of the DEP review.
The west veteran highway improvements, I believe there's, the Pylons Commission has jurisdiction over those those improvements?
The, I, I believe the Pylons limit of jurisdiction is the center of the roadway. I don't believe they have any jurisdiction over the widening on the, on the project side of the roadway.
Ultimately, can we confirm that?
Well, we have a certificate. Jason, do you want to get in?
No, we have a certificate of filing.
We have a certificate of filing.
If you don't have that, Mr. Cle, I can get that too.
So if you needed a certificate of filing from the Pylons, then they do have or are assuming or taking some or some jurisdiction over the West Veterans High Highway road improvements?
Correct, for a small port in the roadway. Their jurisdiction is in the roadway, correct?
And the recreation and amenities, they're open and available to all the residents, single family, townhouse apartments?
Yes.
And the only other question relating to Prosper Town Road. We talked about moving or establishing an easement area for the existing travel or existing sand trail that goes through through the site. Why not just extend, why not put it all in the right of way instead of moving the trail or moving the right of way to the trail? Why not move the trail to the right of way?
Well, initially, it was our intent to be consistent with the previous approval. Which was to to vacate a portion of the right of way and create an easement where the existing trail was outside of the right of way. That was the intent initially. We think that there's, there's probably some modifications based on coordination with the township to deal with how to handle Prosper Town Road. I think the applicant has already agreed to improve portions of it beyond the, the, where the right of way fronts the property. As far as, you know, improving the path. But, and we're also proposing some signage at the crossing of our proposed roadway, both for the purposes of path and to provide, you know, safety considerations for people using the path as opposed to the vehicular traffic. So I, I think that that's something that has to be discussed with the town. And I think also that because it's a a right of way. think also that because it's a, a right-of-way issue, I think it goes, it probably involves the township, um, beyond just the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up on that just quickly? Mr. Tuvali, I know you indicated that you would get us, get the board a copy of that certificate of filing. I'd ask, please do so, and whatever confirmation that you can give the board as to the extent of that Pines jurisdiction.
Sure.
Thank you.
Are you okay? Yes, sir. Good evening, Daphne.
Good evening. Excuse me?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is speaking, please?
Oh, um, just identify yourself, the court reporter.
I'm sorry, Ernie Peters, the board planner. This question's to Daphne and to Jason with regards to the Prosper Town Road right-of-way. Can you explain what process or operation has to occur when you leave the board? In other words, if we're going to put this in an affirmative resolution, we spell out what has to happen? We, we talked about from an engineering perspective, where we're going to, we're going to take this and vacate it, we're going to take this and put an easement. Whether those operations, how do those operations occur and with what parties do they occur with?
Sure. I can address it, it's fine. So when you, and you vacate any sort of right-of-way, there's a state statute that deals with that, um, and the, the township has to agree to the, to the street vacation. So the township, the governing body, um, would do that. Um, and since it's consistent with a development project approved by the planning board, um, it would most likely occur in number one, a developer's agreement, and number two, in ordinance for the vacation. So that's as to the vacation. And then the easement back to the township would have to be done by the applicant, um, providing the easement to the township, also to be memorialized, um, in a developer's agreement. So there would be work with the municipality, um, subsequent, just like anything that would occur, um, in a public right-of-way that was on a municipal road, subsequent to the approval, um, with the governing body, um, based on the vacation that's proposed. And they would have to accept, um, what the applicant is proposing.
I guess my point is, is, is the governing body encumbered by what happens at the planning board? Or is that something, you, you said you'd work it out as part of a developer's agreement?
Yeah, so, so if the, um, just, it would almost be like an outside agency approval. So if, um...
I didn't, it was clear on the record, and I want to make sure that...
Okay.
Because if, if Daphne's done with her testimony, I don't, we're going to come back to it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, Ernie, that's, if that's what you wanted me to clarify, just so everybody was on the same page, then that, that, that's fine.
Um, Daphne, you had indicated that, um, vehicle turning templates were going to be provided for, I believe, the multifamily portions of the project. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that was in response to one of your comments.
Okay, so, I, I would assume we're not going to get done tonight. Are those something that are, something that's going to be submitted for review, or is that going to be submitted as part of resolution compliance?
I think that, that would be up to the board, but, um, we can do it either way.
Well, Daphne indicated she had reviewed it with the fire department. We have a letter from them indicating, I, I guess at some point, we need someone in responsible charge to look at the plan and proffer an opinion to the board, for the board to make an informed decision.
Well, I would say that typically, um, an application being approved to fire department approval is not, is very common. So again, to the extent that the fire official were to have any issues with the turning radii or, um, with the way the vehicles access the building, um, we would be subject to that.
Part of the testimony indicated there was going to be an additional tot lot and some benches in the passive area. Again, that's something that we haven't seen yet, we're going to see at some point in time?
Correct. That's something that was raised in both your, and I believe Mr. Clay's review letters, as well as was raised by the special master, um, and we agreed to, um, add those additional facilities pursuant to those requests.
With regards to dumpster locations, um, I, I'm not sure ultimately Daphne's going to lay out dumpster pads, but they're going to be sited somewhere, and I guess I, whether it comes from Daphne or it comes from another witness, um, someone to tell us that they're sized adequately for the number of units that are going to be served for the purposes of both waste and recycling.
Yeah, I think Mr. Newman, as, as some, as a representative of the applicant who is in charge of designing these facilities, similar types of facilities, can provide that information.
And then the responsibility for contracting with the hauler?
Yeah, I was going to cover that, Mr. Peters and Mr. Newman's testimony, absolutely. We were going to address that.
Okay, thank you. Um, with regards to outside agency approvals, we, we went through a great deal of them, and if I bring one up that was testified to, I apologize. Did we talk about Ocean County Soil Conservation District approval?
No, but that's, that's required, no doubt. In fact, I don't think we actually talked specifically about outside agency approvals, but the ones off the top of my head would be the Ocean County Planning Board, where we have made application already and been deemed complete, the Ocean County Soil Conservation District, NJDEP, well, before we get there, the, uh, JTMUA for the balance of the water and the sewer approvals. We already have a preliminary approval from them.
App approvals from the MUA do you require?
Excuse me?
What other approvals from the MUA would you require after?
We'll need a, we'll need a tentative approval before we can apply to DEP for, um, for a TWA.
And then after that?
Then after, after it's all done, we'll need a final approval, preliminary tentative final from the JTMUA.
Plus approvals from the state?
Plus approval from the state. And I think the final from the JTMUA comes after the approval from the state, or maybe even after construction. It's not before the state approval.
Um, while I'm reasonably sure you didn't testify to this, um, since they're on your plans, who's going to discuss the phasing of the site improvements? If, if there is a phasing plan for the site improvements?
Yeah, there actually was a phasing plan included in the, um, definitely in the, in the last set of plans submitted to the town in July. I'm not sure if it was on the very first set, um, but I'm, I think it's page four of the set of plans had a phasing plan that identified, uh, four phases for the project. And, and the intent is that, and maybe I didn't mention this, the intent is that they do be standalone phases. The phasing plan that's identified within the plan set is, um, not a detailed construction phasing plan, it's just a general phasing plan. So, um, when it gets closer to construction, we'd have to provide a more detailed plan to confirm that, um, you know, how to end utilities, where to cut off utilities, those kinds of things.
I just, I wanted to be able to discuss with the board and, and if the public had any questions with regard to what was going first and how it was going to happen.
Um, we can, I can, I can pull up a copy of the phasing plan if we want to do that. Jason, can we do that? Or do we want to wait? Or maybe, maybe that's something Mitch can, Mr. Newman?
Well, this is what I first suggest. Mr. Newman can, um, answer the question in more detail, and if he's not satisfied, we can go through the phasing plan on the...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I may, just, or Mr. Peters, this is Sean Gertner again. Um, when either Mr. Newman or Ms. Galvin go back to that, I think you should address for the board what the trigger is to move from this general phasing plan to a more detailed construction phasing. What is the trigger that the board or outside agencies should expect that the construction plan would be developed so that there's a better understanding of the phasing and the development, recognizing the fact that you have a 20-year GDP?
Okay.
It has to be reconciled.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe the last thing I wanted to ask you about was the force main easement through the off-site properties. Did we explain, again, sort of what the process or the operation was to get that accomplished? And if any portion of that needs to be part of a planning board resolution?
Um, Mr. Newman would definitely be the better person to go over the history of that. Um, the, there is an easement already in place, um, so I don't think that part of the process needs to be, um, dealt with the same way that the Prosper Town Road issue needs to be dealt with by a, by the governing body, um, because there is an easement already in place, it may need to be modified, but Mitch can, can speak to that, um, when he testifies, which is fine.
And at this point, I have no additional questions for Ms. Galvin.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Doug Clay, going back to the phasing plan, can we talk a little bit about the, I'll call them triggers, as far as when the recreational amenities, specifically the clubhouse, you know, comes online?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Newman can, will be able to go through all that, that's fine. You mean, Mr. Clay, you mean on how many units and when that's, when that becomes available to the residents?
Yes.
Yep, we can, no problem. Happy to address that.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I have one question for Ms. Galvin, please? Um, I'd like to reiterate, I would really like to see the emergency vehicle templates by our next meeting if possible. And the other question I had was on your, your traffic circle. Is that being used as a traffic calming device, or is that removable?
Uh, it's not removable, I can't, Mr. Verderese, the traffic engineer, can testify in more detail about the circle, but it's not removable, it's a permanent...
I, no, I meant, can you take it out of the plan? Sorry.
Oh, can I take it out of the plan? Um, I, I think it creates some issues with the circulation, I think that's why it's there to start with, and it might accommodate the fire trucks.
Yeah, but Mr. Verderesi can, I think, answer the question regarding, you know, what, what its purpose is from a traffic standpoint.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there, if there's no other questions from the board or the board professionals, I can have Mr. Verderesi, um, provide his traffic testimony, and then, um, we can follow up on some of the questions that were asked, uh, that I defer to him.
Um, yeah, what do you anticipate his testimony to last? I mean, it's, it's 10 to 10, we've been going at it for quite a while.
Yeah, I think, I think his, I think direct, Mr. Chairman, I would say maybe 20 minutes.
Okay, and then, uh, a, after that, we'll have questions, and then I think we're going to wrap it up.
Okay, let's see how it goes, but yeah, I don't, I don't expect Mr. Verderesi to be as long as Ms. Galvin.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, we should swear him in, right?
You've raised your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
I have to give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, please.
Nicholas Verderesi, V E R D E R E S E, um, principal founder of Dynamic Traffic.
Okay, so you also were getting some feedback with you. Um, you got to make sure your mic were beyond my knowledge about how to fix that.
Hopefully, we're good now.
Yeah.
That's much better.
Sure.
Good. All right. Uh, Nick, uh, can you give your professional qualifications to the board like Ms. Galvin did? Educational background, licenses held, and experience testifying as a traffic engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have a bachelor's, science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in 1990. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. As I noted, uh, principal founder of Dynamic Traffic located in Lake Como, New Jersey. Uh, I regularly appear before boards, I've been, you know, in front of this board probably half a dozen times in the last few years.
We accept the qualification.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, Mr. Verderesi, just some, some foundational questions before we get started. Um, you physically visited the site and the surrounding roadway network?
Yeah, a number of times.
Okay. And you prepared the traffic impact study that was submitted to the board in connection with this application?
Yes.
Okay. And you're also familiar with the roadway, with the roadway network that surrounds the subject property, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So why don't we break up your testimony into, um, I guess, sections, or, um, I think we should start maybe with traffic and trip generation, then we can get into circulation and parking afterwards. So why don't you start with your analysis of traffic and trip generation?
Sure. Uh, we prepared a traffic impact study, was submitted to the board, reviewed by the board professionals, as well as Ocean County Engineering Department. It was dated May 31st, 2019. Uh, in that, uh, we had a series of track accounts associated with this project. They were done during your normal commuter peak hours, 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 4:30 to 6:30 PM. Uh, those were done in April of 2018, as well as May of 2019, um, at a number of surrounding intersections in the area of this, uh, project. It was a study, just want to make the board aware, it was one cohesive study between the north section and the south, so a lot of intersections studied near the north as well, but I'm going to focus on the intersections that are, uh, closest to the, uh, subject project. Uh, so we also, uh, put down what we call automatic traffic recorders that, that count full 24 hours worth of data. That was placed, uh, in April of 2018 for about a one-week period to identify any fluctuations in traffic volumes in the area. Um, then what we did was, we identified, after we identified the existing, we identified how much traffic the project's going to generate. We use standard trip generation data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, the same thing we use for, you know, all of our traffic impact studies, uh, and, you know, anything we've done here in, in Jackson Township as well. Again, reviewed by your professionals. I had no issue with the, uh, foundation of the trip generation and where it came from, uh, so we're confident that we're, uh, projecting traffic volumes, uh, here, uh, that, um, that are recognized by the industry and are, uh, associated with this project. Uh, then what we do is, we look at what the traffic, uh, how it operates in its, essentially in its existing condition prior to development of the project and the future condition with the additional traffic from the site. And we do a comparison of the pre and the post. Uh, so the intersections we looked at, uh, near here, uh, just to our west, uh, Stump Tavern Road is the next, uh, main intersection to our west. Uh, so we did do traffic counts and analysis there. Everything worked at good levels of service at that intersection. The project had little impact to the, uh, to the intersection, little change to the operation at that intersection. Uh, to the east of the site, uh, we looked at the West Veterans Highway, uh, and 571 intersection, uh, and identified, uh, some potential improvements that could be made to offset, uh, essentially mitigate any impact from the project. We presented that to the county, uh, they've accepted those improvements, uh, so we will now be, um, issuing a, an adjustment to that signal, uh, and provide it to the county, and we will, uh, make that change, uh, if, you know, if the project's approved, uh, in the future. Um, that change will bring everything back to acceptable levels of service. Uh, the main improvement, uh, we actually have an improvement proposed as part of the project, it's along our frontage, you heard some reference to it before. So I'm going to go to an exhibit.
Nick, while you're pulling up that exhibit, your analysis for the south incorporated the traffic for, for the north and vice versa, correct?
Yes. Um, just a question, I think Daphne asked the same question. Are you seeing an exhibit that says A10?
Yes.
You are? Okay, because it shows up on my other screen, just like it did for her, so that's interesting. Uh, okay, so A10, it has today's date, uh, this is submitted to the board, uh, this is, uh, essentially a rendered version of our roadway improvement plans that have been, um, prepared by my office and submitted to the municipality, as well as the county, and reviewed by the county as well, um, entitled CR528 Widening Exhibit. Uh, this exhibit to orient everyone, north is up on the page, on the bottom, uh, where my hand is going, that's West Veterans Highway, and there's the main access into the property, um, as noted earlier. So I'm going to zoom in a little so you can see some detail here.
Nick, just also, I, I know, uh, you, you said when the counts were, but just to verify, all the counts were done pre-COVID-19? Nick, just also, I, I know you, you said when the counts were, but just to verify, all the counts were done pre COVID-19 and pandemic, right?
Right, yes.
Okay.
So I'm zoomed in here. This is showing the main intersection. So that, to, to give you a little perspective here, if you're coming from Stump Tavern from the left side of the page, coming towards the site. There'll be a transition and a new left turn lane to slow down and stop to wait to make a left turn in. Same thing in the other direction. If you're coming from Cassville Road and you travel west, there'll be a decelerating right turn lane to enter into the property. As Daphne mentioned earlier, there's also sidewalk and curb and shoulders proposed as part of the project. All of the widening will be along the property frontage. So there'll be no required right away takings associated with this improvement. We will be holding the curb, well, the edge of pavement line on the south side, which is the opposite side of the project frontage. All road, all lane widths are 12 foot wide, meeting county standards. We have two 12 foot exit lanes for left and right turns as well. And as Daphne mentioned, a median separated boulevard separated access driveway as required by the residential site improvement standards.
Nick, just before you continue on the site, you talked about some improvements to the intersection in your, in your traffic analysis. Those were signal mitigation timing improvements?
Yeah. So there was an adjustment of the signal timing to move it around to optimize the operation of the intersection.
All right. And those timing adjustments were reviewed and approved by the county?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Thanks. I just want to make sure we clarified that.
You're welcome. I'm going to go to the next exhibit, just so you can see the, the rest of the widening. So this is exhibit A9, which is essentially the match line to the left of what you previously saw on A10. That's today's date as well. And it's entitled CR 528 widening exhibit. On the left side of the page is Harvard West Drive. You can see the widening ties into the widening that was done as part of that subdivision. Your sidewalk that connects to the existing sidewalk that was constructed as part of the Harvard West Drive improvements as well. There is a full 13 foot shoulder along our frontage in this area. With two 12 foot lanes and the existing five foot shoulder on the opposite side of the roadway. I didn't mention before, but there was some testimony about the six foot shade tree and utility easement. And we're calling that here. It's a dashed line six foot off the back of the sidewalk. And which is also the proposed right away line.
Okay. And all these improvements are RSIS compliant, if applicable?
Yeah, they're not applicable here along the road. They would need to meet the county standards and they meet all of the county standards. I'm going to switch over because I'm going to start talking about the site. This is A3. I've just zoomed in. So the site is, you know, as large as I can get it here on the screen. Again, to orient you on the bottom is West Veterans Highway. The site sits on the north side of the roadway. Yeah. As I noted, the access as proposed here, there's a main access in the center of the page. There's also an emergency access paver area at the end of road 11 at the left side or west side of the property. Those are the access points proposed for the site. As I mentioned earlier, it meets the residential site improvement standards. So working my way onto the site, we have a boulevarded entrance roadway with two 28 foot half widths. Then you continue on to internal intersections. And if you go to your right, you'd be moving towards the single family home section of the development. As Daphne mentioned, there's 61 units in this section with 21 units on the right half of the cul-de-sac. And 18 units on the left half of the cul-de-sac. Reason I mention that is there's a, a limit on how many units you're allowed to have on a cul-de-sac. And that's controlled by a 250 trip, daily trip limit. And 21 single family units is the maximum you can get in the cul-de-sac and stay under the 25. So we do meet the residential site improvement standards. At the end of each of the cul-de-sacs, there's a cul-de-sac bowl, 40 foot radius meeting residential site improvement standards as well. There was some discussion as to our small little roundabout feature that connects the two cul-de-sacs into the stem. That is designed essentially the same as the cul-de-sac. It has a 40 foot of radius on it. The reason for that to be provided, a couple of reasons that the traffic reason for it is to allow any larger vehicles, say a school bus to be able to turn or an emergency vehicle, FedEx, UPS, trash. If they needed to turn around, they didn't have to drive all the way to the back of the cul-de-sac. We're providing essentially another cul-de-sac in the form of a, of a roundabout. It does provide some traffic calming measures in that it defines that intersection a little bit better. It's a very light volume intersection. We felt that it was a benefit to the overall project to have that turnaround and not force the vehicles to have to go to the back end of the cul-de-sac to turn around. We're confident that, that it can handle the, the, the fire truck as provided to us by the township. And as we noted, we will be providing that prior to the next hearing. Working my way back, it's a divided roadway along the first portion. 25 feet on each side with interspersed parking between the driveways. Essentially in this whole area, there are give or take room for about, I would say 90 to 100 parallel parking spaces in here. We didn't specifically count them up. That was just a general calculation I did quickly. So that's more than needed for visitors. You require 0.5 visitors per unit. So you only need 30 or 31 and we're well in excess of that. As far as the overall parking needed for the, for the single families, two car garage, two car driveways, three, so that, that results in a calculation of 3.5 per unit, which is well in access of the two per unit for a three bedroom, a single family home. To work my way back, the roadway, so the townhouse section of development. So when you came in the main entrance, made the right turn, there's a number of townhomes in that area. 90 townhomes in that area. There was some discussion as to the driveways and the garages. The garage door openings are 15 feet. The driveway proposed is 15 feet wide. You don't get credit for, as Daphne mentioned, you don't get credit for two spaces in the driveway. But 15 is adequate for one car to park and someone to be able to bypass to get inside the garage or exit the garage on the opposite side. So we're confident that the 15 feet is enough to, to accommodate the three vehicles that, that park there. Practically speaking, normal average sized vehicles could fit side by side if need be in the driveway. If someone felt they wanted to park two, but from a, from a standard, we're only counting them.
Can I interject for just a moment? Let's get back to these driveways and garages. What is the national standard for the width of a two car garage? And what is the standard width for a driveway for two, for a two car garage?
Well, the width of the driveway really only has to be as wide as the opening to the garage. And from what I've.
I, I asked you a question of whether, what the standard is, the building standard is in this country for a driveway. Cause everywhere I'm looking, it's saying that you need at least a 10 foot width for each car. That's for the driveway. Garages, a double door garage is usually 16 feet wide. Now, how you're shrinking it to 15 feet and why you're specifying 15 feet, I don't know. But I think that that would be a disservice to the potential home buyers that they think they're getting a two car garage. And in reality, they're not. So I'd like to know what the standards are in the United States for garage widths, double garages and driveways. Why you guys are not conforming and why you're making them small?
Well, hold up, before Nick, is there a RSIS requirement? That the residential site improvement standard for the state of New Jersey that we have to comply with for this issue?
For the garage width?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So there's no standard that's being deviated from?
No.
Well, standard as far as his association goes, but I'm talking about building standards.
No, I, I, I referenced.
If I were to build a house myself and the building department would come and I'd go for my permit. I'm sure that they would say that my garage has to be a minimum width of X.
No, what, what I was asking him was the state of New Jersey residential site improvement standards, which govern. Nick, can you please speak to what, how the RSIS governs parking and driveway widths for residential development such as this?
Well, it doesn't govern the width of a driveway to a single family home. And it doesn't have any direction as to how wide the driveway or the garage opening is. I agree that that would be a construction item, not necessarily a traffic design item.
I agree.
Now we're coming back here, so I will do a little research between now and the next meeting. Give you some of that information and I'll look at what the widths of the interior of the garage is. But from what I understand is the garage interior width meets all standards as well as the opening for any construction codes. As far as the driveway width, it just needs to be wide enough to get the cars into the driveway. We're only taking credit for one parking space. So a nine by 18 space out front would be adequate to park a car. And then the additional room for entering the drive, the garage.
I understand all of that. I just have difficulty understanding why you would advertise a two car garage. And not have enough room to park two cars in front of that garage, side by side. And bring two cars into, I, I've never heard of a 15 foot garage door. And I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around this.
Okay. Well, we understand the concern and we'll, we'll address it at the next meeting.
Okay. Follow up question. Does that tie into a goal or objective to reduce the amount of impervious coverage? Rather to, yes, reducing amount of impervious coverage by shortening the width of each driveway times X amount of driveways. Does that assist with your calculations on FAR?
And setbacks.
Yeah. Is, is that, what's the motivation behind having a driveway that is arguably not wide enough depending on the, the observer? Does it tie to impervious coverage calculations?
Yeah. Nick, you, you were not part of that in terms of the overall design, right?
I was not. No.
Okay. Yeah. I don't think he's the appropriate witness to answer that question.
Okay. Can I direct that to our planner?
Mr. Verderese is correct that I don't believe RSIS specifically deals with the width of a driveway to a two car garage. So I think between now and the next meeting, we're going to have to find a correct citation as it relates to that. There are generalizations that are used during land use that two off-street parking spaces should be 18 feet wide. I'm not sure that's a standard that they need to comply with or not. So we're going to have to take some time to make sure that that is the standard. But I think that's what the chairman was referring to was the idea that a two car garage should be 18 feet wide.
But they're asserting that whether it should or shouldn't be, they're not required to do it, if I understand correctly.
To the best of my knowledge, and I have a copy of RSIS with me this evening. I haven't found anything that talks about the width of a driveway or a garage opening for a two car off-street parking area. We will do our homework between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Wall went on, what the chairman wanted us to look into was despite RSIS not governing this issue or us deviating from RSIS, whether there was some other legal requirement that we had to comply with. I believe that's what the chairman wanted us to follow up on. Is that correct?
Standard building practices, you know, a doorway is, you know, a minimum of what 32?
What, if there's, if there's a code provision on that issue, we will find out.
But Mr. Chairman, if I may, more than that, I think, this is Sean Gurner, and to follow up on Mr. Wall's question. I think someone should be ready to testify that if, for instance, you provided 18 foot driveways, what would that do to your impervious coverage calculation?
Does it impact your floor area ratio? Does it impact your calculations? Are you creating this thinner driveway to maximize the density as opposed to having a good form factor for an individual or family that would like to live in Jackson? And the only follow up is if the RSIS doesn't speak to width of driveways, is that correct? Nick?
Correct. Yes.
All right. Would, is, would it then to, to, to the extreme mean that you can have no driveways at all and the cars just park on the grass and get to the garage however they can?
No, then you would just review practical design experience or as Ernie mentioned, other treatise that may have some direction.
Then finally, just going back to practical design. Did the planning board chairman indicate what, to use your words, what practical design would be for two car garage? And the interpretation of a potential buyer to live in Jackson, that they would anticipate and expect a certain width, certain carriageway, as it were, from a practical design standpoint, to use your commentary, to get in and out of your new home in Jackson. As opposed to the other extreme, which is driving on grass, no driveway.
Yeah. So I would, to take that one step further, I would look at to see what the, the garage opening width would be. And I would match that essentially to the driveway width.
Okay. That's, that's our, that's on our to do list for our next meeting. So let's, go ahead. You can continue.
Okay. So moving around, I guess I'll talk a little about parking in that section as far as the numbers. There's 90 units there, requires 216 parking spaces. In the general vicinity of these townhouse units, there are approximately 325 parking spaces. So we're well in excess of what's required in that section. Overall numbers, you already are testimony, we meet the overall, but I want to give you a little bit about each section. So you're comfortable that the distribution of parking is adequate. That was a question, I think, in both of your professionals review letter. So working your way back, you have the multifamily, the six multifamily buildings. All of that parking is, is done via surface parking. There's 144 units between those buildings. Again, it kind of randomly drawing and separating out the spaces. I came up to about 300 parking spaces or so available to that area where 288 are required. So again, exceeding the requirement in that area. The townhomes, all the way to the, to the far west end of the property, northwest corner, there's 78 units in this area here. Requires 187 spaces. There's upwards of over 300 parking spaces in that area to handle the, the demand. 216, 187, I'm sorry. Then the stacked townhomes, that's the area down here further south and southwest. There are a total of 176 units requiring 415 spaces. There are 445 spaces proposed in the area around those townhouses. So again, exceeding the, the requirement. In all of the areas, those totals include at a minimum of 0.5 spaces per unit in a common area, whether it be in these parking lots around the. in a common area, whether it be in these parking lots around the the multis or the perpendicular on-street parking along the other roadways in the areas of the townhouses. One of the questions that came up in the, the review letters was a discussion as to bus stops. For, for multifamily developments like this, we don't usually assign us an area upfront. What we do, we want to make sure we have, you know, long stretches of straight curb air, you know, sidewalk throughout areas of sidewalk, crosswalks where they can stop. We'll work with the, you know, with your transportation group for the schools at the, you know, the proper time down the road. But there's a dozen plus space places on the site here that buses can stop and make it efficient for picking up groups of kids in different areas of the development. There's adequate turnaround, whether it be in the cul-de-sacs or whether it be on the connecting roadways throughout the rest of the development. I guess kind of wraps it up. I guess I'll give a overall kind of.
And Nick, before you do that, I just want to go through a couple of items.
Go ahead.
The first is I want to go to Mr. Cleese's letter. He asked that the applicant should confirm cul-de-sac right of way and pavement with dimensions as well as minimum curd radii as complying with RSIS.
Yeah. So we comply with RSIS for, you know, all the traffic related centerline radii, intersection radii, cul-de-sac sizes. There is one, I guess, the minimalist exception for right of way.
I'll get to that in a minute. We'll get to that in a second. So then, he also indicated that we should address that all the off-street parking requirements comply, you know, as to all the units. And you went through that. So the answer is we comply, correct?
Correct.
All right. Also on page five, number E, he asked that we should address the adequacy of separation distance to any existing driveways along West Veterans Highway. So can you just address that, please?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm going to go back to A10. You could see our new access point again, orienting you, West Veterans along the center of the page. North is up from the new access point to the nearest driveway to the east. On our side is approximately 600 feet. On the opposite side of the street, it's about 800 feet. And then if I go to A9, so you go off the page to Harvard, Harvard West Drive, we're about 1800 feet from there. So all of those far exceed any standards for distances between driveways.
Okay. And then the site distance of the driveway, is that safe and properly designed?
Yeah. So we'll end up looking at two separate things. One is it's a county intersection. And they require what they call a site right easement, 30 by 100. So we show that on our roadway improvement plans. So we're keeping that clear. You can see on this plan, you see how the landscaping is kind of angled for that to happen. Also, we look at, we looked at the township ordinance, which just takes you over to Ashto, which is a publication that has all different design features that we utilize. We essentially call it RDIS.
Can you just indicate what that stands for for the record?
Yes, that's the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. And that's a publication, as I noted, all different design features for roadways and site distance is one of them. Viewer ordinance takes us to that. So we looked at it and it would be a 14.5 feet back. And I think it's 700 feet in each direction. So we exceed that sight line as proposed and we'll show that site triangle as well on our plans.
Okay. And Mr. Peters, I mean, his report at page 12, section E, has a traffic parking and pedestrian circulation section. Do you agree that we can comply with all the technical comments set forth in that letter? I know some items require testimony and if you haven't gone through them, I'll ask you to go through them. But as to tech, the technical items, can we comply?
We can, yes.
Okay. So the first item that I don't think we covered in testimony, if you can just speak to it, is the, is the right of way, some of the parking stalls within the right of way. Can you speak to that, please, and indicate whether you think it's designed appropriately?
I can. Our planner is going to present a little more detail on where it actually is and how the right of way line in those parking spaces. Our neck, you know, the line goes through the parking spaces, but he'll show you some detail on that. As far as roadway safety, perpendicular parking stalls is, and you know, 30 foot roadways is a standard. Actually, the standard is 24 foot road and parking stalls. So we're exceeding that standard from RSIS. So I'm confident that having those stalls and having a right of way line that goes through them has no impact as far as a safety and ability to enter and exit those parking stalls.
Okay. So the next item that I'd like to go through, I think we covered almost all of Mr. Peters' comments where there are testimony. I think there was one item that I believe we did not cover and I want to make sure we do. He asked at section 20, comment 21 of his report, that the traffic engineer should discuss the benefits of improving Prosper Town Road. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah. So to orient you, I'm sure you're all familiar already. You've seen this plan enough times. Prosper Town Road is off on the right side of the page. Here, I'm going to scroll over. The right of way comes down and eventually hits West Veterans Highway well to the east of our proposed access point. As far as providing that, it's not required based on the residential site improvement standards. It's not necessary to increase capacity. The capacity is good at the driveway that we're proposing. So I don't feel there's any need to provide that second access. We also have an emergency access and a divided boulevard entrance. So I feel more than comfortable with what we're proposing. Provides for safe and efficient access to the site. Additionally, providing any access to that point. If you're familiar with the area, there are a number of homes right in the area of that. It would really be an unnecessary burden to, you know, put pavement right next to someone's house in an intersection that may need to be widened along their frontage. So I feel there's no real benefit to the development of the project to provide that roadway.
And just going back to the site driveway, I just forgot to ask you this. The geometry of the site driveway is properly configured?
Oh, yes.
Okay. You don't see any issues with turning, returning movements in and out of the property?
No, we have a well-designed driveway with, you know, significant improvements along the frontage.
And you don't see any concerns regarding queuing at the driveway either in the peak hours?
No.
Okay. So now you can go back to summing up your, your testimony.
You kind of summed it for me, but overall it's a, a pretty, I would say it's kind of a standard layout. You have 24 and 30 foot roads. You know, single families, you're, you're having the parallel parking with the 30 foot wide roadways. In the multis, you have a mix of 24 and 30 with perpendicular parking. Head in driveways and garages for most of the year. All centerline radii, intersection radii, sight lines. With roadway widths, all conform to the residential site improvement standards. The site's been well designed, well laid out. Yeah, we've been looking at this site for a number of years. We've gone through a number of review letters from the board as well and have addressed the vast majority, if not all, of the comments from the review letters.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I defer back to you.
Anyone have any questions for this man? No? All right. I think that's going to conclude this evening's testimony.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question before you? I know we went a while. I don't anticipate Mr. Newman's testimony on operations being long.
No, I'm sorry. I'm not going to allow that to start at 10:30. After all, these volunteers have been here since 7:30. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to start fresh testimony at 10:30.
Okay. I just thought, I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, okay. So we have, our next board meeting is scheduled for December 7th. A day of infamy. So 7:30, we will continue this testimony. Again, you are the only application on for that evening. I guess you have a little homework to do and we'll see everyone on the 7th.
All right. Mr. Chairman, can we just make an announcement that the application is being carried to the December 7th, 2010 meet, regular meeting of the board at 7:30 PM without further notice and that the, the Zoom instructions as well as the phone instructions will be available on the township's website. In addition, the plans and exhibits will all be available in the same locations as they were in connection with this meeting. I just would like the, the public to be aware of that.
Yes, it's 2020.
Did I say two? Did I not say 2020? I'm sorry. 2020 is, 2020 has everybody off their game. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's very true. Okay. Thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
So there will be no further notice, correct?
Yeah, there. That's your determination. I mean, we will have the Zoom information as posted. But it's, it's a different link, correct? It will be a different link. We can't carry the same link over.
I understand that, but the link will be posted for the board, for the members of the public on the municipal website, correct?
Yes, it will. Okay. Good night, everyone. Thank you.